Good morning, everyone. This is a county commissioner's work session. We have one hour to discuss. At nine o'clock, we have to move to additional meetings, so we'll get started here. Since it is a work session, it's very much different than a regular meeting. And we're here to listen to evidence and energy, their presentation and discussion. And so, any comments from the county commissioner? Can you start here?
Start.
Okay, let's start, because I know the time's going to go by quickly. So who's starting?
My name is Barry Laverne, geoscience director for evidence and energy.
Okay.
You have a short little PowerPoint that'll... You guys need to...
Would you mind speaking up, so we can all hear you, please?
I'm Barry Laverne, from evidence and energy, geoscience director. So, what I'm going to go through is a PowerPoint, just discussing the basics of seismic, what it is, why we acquire it, and what kind of information are we provided? This is an example of a resultant cross section from a 3D seismic project. And on the X-axis, it's distance, which in this example is five to 10 miles. And on the depth profile, nine, four to five miles, up to 30,000 feet. On our subject area, we'll be able to do optimally up to 15,000 feet. Up to five miles long, so for comparison, pretty similar to this. And you can see some geological complexities in this example. And that's the main goal of this, is to try to understand what geological hazards are available, faults, fractures, thicknesses, structure. But what we use is acoustic energy from the source, fibrousized for shot holes, and give resultant subsurface imbalances. Without seismic, we'd be required to drill astronomical wells to get even close to the amount of information out there given of 3D seismic on the subsurface. So lessen the footprint by using science and data from seismic. And maximize productivity and efficiency. The biggest thing for us is being environmentally conscious and moving the surface to surface.
Just as a note, the last project Barrett and I worked on looked exactly like that picture. So this is not a random picture. It is actually more aggressive than that, so we would have been lost.
Yeah, and working in the valley years ago, I was able to do a lot of geologic mapping and fault and fracture mapping. A lot of those don't match the USGS published maps. So the information that we've gathered and the crews that we've worked with to get the surface hazards mapped and understand the subsurface is really important in this area, because there is complex geology. There's volcanics, there's faults and fractures, and we want to do our best to understand that. This is just a diagram showing the difference between 2D and 3D seismic. On the left, which is a project that we're underway of trying to get completed, is a 2D line. We're working on that with a private landowner. And some of the resulting information that we're going to get from the 2D line is going to help with efficiencies from the 3D project and any sort of impact of the seismic that is felt at certain distances from structures. So we're going to use that to calibrate. We call it a PPB, peak particle velocity analysis. And that gives us information to understand any sort of impact up to a threshold value when we do the 3D. And we'll get a little bit more into that with Mark and Robert here shortly. But the 2D line, it's 2D, but 3D, you see is a series of 2D lines. This is one of my favorite slides from my early training in my did physical career. This is just an example of the source with the receiver and the resultant trace that you get at different rock layers. And this is the methodology that will be applying here on the 3D seismic projects. Can everyone hear in the back?
Not very well.
Not very well?
Thank you for asking.
Can you put your... They can't hear you.
So the good thing about seismic data is with this non-invasive methodology, we're able to see resultant stratigraphic layers and thicknesses and geological formations. And this is just a theory. This is how we'll implement it in the field, is one source is initiated and then the information is recorded at the receivers. At the end of the day, you get a stratigraphic cross-section from those technical word here is acoustic impedance boundaries, and you get reflection of that rock layer on the trace. So that's the methodology that we get to have the information that we saw on the first slide of the geological formation on the subsurface. This is a good example of one of our sources from a previous project. This is a source from a shot hole. Here's just a 10-second video. Look towards the center of the video, you'll be able to see the source.
Everybody see it?
So just after the beeping that you hear, you'll see the slight motion in the grass, and that's the actual source.
Yeah, so this is a good example here. These guys are about 75 or 100 feet away?
It looks more like about 50 to 75 feet.
Nowhere near, if you're standing there.
Nope.
So, the next video I want to show is how we're going to implement the heliportable drilling. And heliportable drilling is done to mitigate any surface disturbance or adding tracks or trails. So we'll be... We'll have a KMAX helicopter that is the world's quietest helicopter. And this is the methodology for connecting to a heliportable drill. As you see, he's coming in with a long line system. Connecting, waves them on. He's going to move to the next point in this example. In our project, we'll move 220 feet to the next source with the heliportable drill.
And it'll take two weeks. The first video, it'll take two weeks to do all the sources. And before that, it'll take about two to three weeks to drill all the locations, for a total of four to six weeks.
And you see, the crew's on the ground, and they're landing the heliportable rig, which has about a two-square-foot surface area touching the ground. And that's now one of the horizontal stabilizers with the four stabilizer legs. And this is an example of drilling a 3-inch diameter shot hole. And we would like to invite you guys out in the spring, once we backfill and plug for Colorado regulations. And Mark, I think you mentioned in the past, there's no way you can even find...
Frequently, I can't even figure out where I was following... If I go out the following year and look for it, I frequently can't even figure out where I exactly had been the previous year, if I've done my work correct.
So hopefully, those are informative videos, kind of detailing the actual operation that we'll be detailing. And what I'll do is transition to Robert on a lot of the cultural and historic protections that we're implementing on this project as well.
Sure, sure. My name's Robert Beltman. I'm a natural resource advisor and also a wildlife biologist. Been doing this throughout the West for the last 25 years. And what we came up with is a risk reduction mitigation program in compliance with Parks and Wildlife and the Forest Services Buffer Program. So we've put buffers around wetlands, we've put buffers around sieves and springs, buffers around gold medal streams. We've also had an archaeology crew going out there, looking for any eligible or non-eligible sites. That'll be recorded. We're almost through the project and only found one possible eligible site. That'll be recorded, sent to the Forest Service, and then shared with the State Historical Preservation Office. We also have buffers for any structures. That includes ditches and reservoirs, which is per the forest plan. And then that includes any infrastructure, wells, pipelines, historic roads. We also have a soil vegetation program where we backfill the soil. If there is any soil damage, we will do reclamation plan, which is also has a plan for recreation success, which means revegetation and seeding. And then we also have the plug-in, the plug program, that if we do need to, we can use betonite in the hole to make sure that that hole is plugged properly, or we just use the native soil. And that is all per Colorado regulations through the Homeland Gas Commission.
This is an example of the PPB, peak particle velocity analysis, that we'll be monitoring and calibrating, starting with the 2D survey. And you can see on this example, we have the industry standard .35 threshold. And Mark, I'll let you go into a little bit more detail on the technical aspects, but we'll keep it simple, saying, in this example, with the parameters of the source feeding up to 20 to zero feet, you're still underneath that threshold. With any structure reservoir that Robert was mentioning earlier, obviously, when you get to 300 feet away, you're near zero on the peak per particle velocity, which is inches per second. And if you have any more information you want to detail on that?
Yeah, just a little bit more to say on it. And I'll be doing this testing primarily on the 2D test line, because I want to calibrate what the particle velocities are offset to the shots before I go into the 3D project. And it's all done with an aim towards making sure that we don't damage any infrastructure that's out there, pipelines, houses, anything else. And so, there are good engineering studies that show, say, for a house, what level of ground motion in velocity, where it is possible to, the damage could occur. And I want to stay well below that threshold. And so what I do is I go out and I do a walk-away test and measure what the ground velocity is at given intervals away from the shot. And then I can generate this curve for the shots that we'll be taking out there. And that gives me a good guidance for how close or how far away from any sort of infrastructure, pipeline, house, ditch, whatever, I need to stay to make sure that I don't damage it. And as I've said before, I like doing science. I don't like fixing things, and if I break it, I have to fix it. So I'd rather figure out what I have to do ahead of time to make sure that I don't break anything.
Have you studied it over time, like over 10 years? Or is this in real time?
This is in real time.
Because 133 really wants to slide off that hill.
Let's keep on going here. This is from the commissioners.
I'm just trying to pull out more information.
So, the next slide is the surveying locations, source locations that we have. The purple outline is the original AOI that we posed to the US Forest Service. The green line is the acquisition, proposed acquisition area, which has tightened up a lot since the original AOI. And that would be 23 square miles with 2,000 sources in it, and mostly private land. In comparison to size of...
You're saying that the project has been scaled back?
Yeah.
Okay. Then what's in the green line?
Yeah, which is 23 square miles. The original outline is 50 square miles. And both of these projects, in comparison to larger, to the typical 3D acquisition, are on the smaller end of the spectrum. I don't know if you want to go into your detail on your latest PLN project, which is, you said over 100 square miles?
What percentage is private land versus...
Probably... Seventy or 80 percent probably?
Yeah, I don't have the exact figure. It's easy to calculate, but I don't have it exactly. It's probably about 70 percent private land within the operations area that we're looking at.
This is private land.
Robbie, excuse me, for clarification. The area of operations is still the big outside perimeter. The boom-booming has been reduced.
Next slide, and I will fill the wildlife map.
And that's the private land in there outlined as well, isn't it, Barrett?
That's the white area.
That gives you a better visual.
And the purple line is the county boundary line. So I'd say probably about...
And just for importance, due to the hunting, we've been working closely with CPW from Denver always at the game order. We check in weekly basis regarding the hunting. We've agreed to not work on the weekends during the first three, four rifle seasons. We've also agreed to only work during daylight hours, that meaning not being around dusk and dawn. We also have asked CPW and the Forest Service biologists to let us know where we need to start, in which direction we need to move. So we do not, and not only interrupt the hunting operations as minimal as possible, but also to minimize elk movement where they might go up to higher ground and face more snow and get stressed, or be moved down to private land. So basically, we're working in the direction that CPW has asked us to work in. And we only work a couple sections a day, is that correct, Mark? We're not working the entire area in acquisition. We're only working in one corner and moving in the next two weeks in the whole direction. It's very important to point out that we're not working the whole 23-square-mile area. We're just working one corner and going based on what the animal movement is and the hunter movement is. And the shaded area below, if you can't read it in the back, is winter con... Excuse me, winter range for the elk. So we do have a little bit of winter range, which we're very cognizant of. It's an important resource to us.
Thanks, Mark and Robert, for that. That's the last slide. Unless you guys want to revisit any of those or have any specific questions.
Maybe just to add some context, a normal project on federal lands can be 60 to 80 square miles. This is a rather small project for a seismic. Looking more on the private lands, like say in the Front Range, some of the acquisitions could be over 250 square miles. So we're looking at a very focused area, a very small area compared to a normal geophysical project that's looking at a whole valley's geology.
So Levi, I wonder if you might jump in and just provide from the Forest Service process, timelines, context. CPW requests that, that you all will...
Yeah, when this proposal was first brought in, CPW was invited by the company to be involved in that meeting. We had a preliminary project proposal at that point. As soon as I felt comfortable enough that I had the information I needed, I sent out a media release, sent out 6,000 emails, asked for comments on it. That comment period closes on the 26th. The issues that we have come up with internally, from the CPW, other partners, as well as from comments, we're going through those right now to make a determination whether or not the categorical exclusion fits. There is a category that's specifically written for seismic. Depending on what the issues are that we identify, that the public has identified, it may or may not fit. So there's a lot of talk around categorical exclusion. That decision has not been made. It won't be made until after the scoping period closes, because we don't know all the issues. And the issues drive the level of NIPA. So there is a category. If it fits, we will continue on. The next step after that would be decision memo, if it's a categorical exclusion. If not, if we needed to do a higher level of NIPA, EIS, we would carry down that path at that point.
We all have questions, Levi.
When does scoping period end?
26.
And that's, okay, so when do you expect the decision?
It depends on the level of decision. If it's a CE, it could be as soon as the first.
And then there's a threshold for a CE, meaning that a resource from a NIPA standpoint is not impacted, correct?
It's not that it's not impacted. It's context, scope, and scale. There, in our CE regulations, there are a list of things, and that name just escaped me. I apologize. But things like effects to threatened and endangered species, prime farmlands, wetlands, riparian, heritage resources, archaeological resources specifically... I know I'm missing some. But anyway, the scale, scope, and context of effects to those resources are what makes a determination as to whether or not you can use a categorical exclusion.
And then, Robert, I don't know, maybe you or Mark or someone, if you could just outstart at the bigger picture. Here's the 2D project, here's the 3D project. I think that would be helpful.
Sure, sure. Mark, you want to handle 2D?
Sure. Barrett, can you just kind of point it, just point up on the screen there, roughly where the 2D project is going to go? It's all on private property, and it roughly goes across there. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, it's a small project, about 300 receivers, about 70 odd source points. And it's being done to both give us PPB data, so that we can make sure that we're doing everything appropriately across the larger 3D project. But it's also being done to drive and give me data that I can use to determine the depth of the shot holes that I want to use for the 3D project and what charge size I want to use. I want to make sure I don't undersource it, because then I don't get good data. And if we're going to go do this work, I want to get good data that is very usable. But I don't want to spend extra time and extra money out there that doesn't gain anybody any value. And that's what the 2D project is for. It's basically a test line to determine, doing parameter determination. The 3D project will follow on. As we've already mentioned, the majority of the surveying of the sources has been done across the 2D project. The archaeology is almost complete at this point. And we're waiting for the determination by the US Forest Service and the permit to allow us to drill the shot holes and actually acquire the seismic. We're trying to push that as quickly as possible, as much as anything for safety reasons, for all the people out there. Once the winter really sets in, it becomes more dangerous to be working out there. The people who are laying out the geophones and working, they're out in the field for 10-plus hours a day. And when temperatures get colder and snow gets deeper, there are safety concerns that I need to be aware of. And so I'd rather, I would prefer to be able to get this project done before we run into those significant safety concerns. Plus that slows everything down and keeps everybody out in the field longer and drags out the length of the project. So the shorter I can keep it, the happier all the landowners will be out here and the less interference I generate for what they're doing.
And from a natural resource standpoint, Parks and Wildlife would like to get us in there as early as November possible, so we can be out of there as early as December as possible, so we don't impact the winter concentration areas and the winter range for elk. That's a big concern. If we get pushed past December, we're looking at January, you got deeper snows, you have more stress on the elk. And then you're starting to get closer to spring, and then you have raptor nests, and you have other resources. So this is the time, as from a resource window, it's either this or early August. So we really have very small windows, from a resource protection standpoint, to get in there and do what we need to do. And this is the optimal time. And this is why the timing has come down to this particular time slot, from a natural resource side of things. So just to summarize, moving forward, the fastest we'll be moving forward, we will have that silent helicopter possibly in early November, moving into the private land, starting to drill our sources and moving onto the forest throughout November, just to be clear on the timing, if we do get our permit, the way Levi has brought the timeline to.
Any questions?
So you will start the 2D project regardless of the Forest Service, 2D?
Correct. The 2D will be done regardless of the Forest Service determination. It's on private property only. And it will allow us to, if for some reason we can't complete the larger project this fall, and we're looking at pushing it into next year or something like that, it gives us the data to move forward, and we don't have to try and get it done prior to anything else that we do. So it will give us an informed insight into the proper way to do the project.
One of the questions that's come in to the commissioners is, go back to that previous map that we put right there, specific to the Terror Creek ditch is, how will you determine if there has been an impact? Do you have a baseline data for water, all of that, that you will use to measure? Do you look at that as far as some of the potential or probable impacts?
With our current design and operations area, our nearest source is more than a quarter mile away from either the ditch or the reservoir. So there will be absolutely no ground motion that anyone could feel within the ditch, so there's no possibility for any damage to the ditch or the reservoir with the current source locations that we're looking at for the work this fall.
Mark, what's the farthest distance from that source that there would be any motion felt by any rock or structure?
The, probably 100, 150 feet maybe is about as far away as a person standing there could feel any ground motion. Maybe 200 feet.
Oh, 200 feet, which is why no baseline. We're looking at no baseline, because we're obviously more than 200 feet from that reservoir.
Commissioner, I'm the president of Terry Davis. Can I have a few minutes?
I have a question. Do you have historic seismic activity on files from the USG, like the survey? Anything like that, historic?
I don't think we do.
We've not investigated what the historic seismic activity in this area is.
But I believe the Forest Service is looking at that in their analysis.
But I think a good point is that comparing seismicity to seismic acquisition on the Richter scale, whatever that you're doing, is not even on the Richter scale.
You guys, if we're correct, there was, there has been seismic work in this, in the same area or similar area, correct?
There has been a small amount of, yeah, SG did a program to the east of here a few years ago, a number of years before that, back in the either 80s or 90s. I believe there were a couple of 2D lines acquired across this area. Not this area specifically, but in the general area.
The seismic shoot you're talking about, Robbie, was in 2016, and it actually was 30 square miles. And it was larger than the project we're proposing here.
And just, so we have frame of reference, which direction on this?
Northeast of this area.
And, sorry, so I just, there has been seismic activity in this area?
2016, 30 square miles.
Similar concentrations as this proposed project?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the line spacings were approximately the same as what we're looking at.
The difference, Robbie, was that was on very flat land and on mostly roads. So they use fiber-sized vehicles instead of shot holes. That's the only... So they use fiber sized vehicles instead of shot holes. That's the only difference.
So the two, two D program that you described here, we've gone on to ask commissioners to approve that.
That's correct. The Form twenty has been submitted and, and signed off on by, by COGCC, correct.
So what we're really talking about is the three D, is that correct?
Correct. And the Form twenty has not been submitted on that yet. We have just awarded the program to a contractor by Colorado statute. The, the client, in this case Gunnison Energy, is no longer allowed to submit the Form twenty that is required to be submitted by the geophysical contractor. And because we've just awarded it, they haven't submitted that yet. And we don't want to submit it until we have determined the exact travel depth and charge size so that we give them, give the state proper information.
And that's a normal process?
Absolutely.
From a, from, for accounting planners, you know, trips per day, truck, I mean, can you just give a broad overview of, of that information?
A rough overview. I don't know exactly the crew size. A, a crew, a project this size would usually have between thirty and fifty people on it. About half of them would be in the field, actually doing the layout primarily on foot. A number of them will be in the office, a number of them will be working at what's called the LZ or the loading zone where all the equipment is stored and, and the batteries are charged, the, the equipment's set up for deployment. So it's a number of people, so it's a, so you've got about thirty people. They'll use vans to get the people out to the field area. So you'll have ten person, probably eight to ten people per van. So you're looking at half a dozen vehicles per day going out to the field area. Some of the vehicles will stay in the field area rather than coming into town each night. They'll be staying in town in, in hotels. Currently, my surveyors are staying at the Hotchkiss Inn. And so it's not that much, not, not that much traffic, not that many people over such a large area. We'll have one helicopter being used to deploy the geophones. Basically, you take the, the strings of geophones and the battery and the, and the small computer. You put them all in bags. The helicopter will pick up about half a dozen or a dozen of those bags at one time and then set them down at predetermined locations. People on foot will come along, they'll unpack the bags, they'll carry the equipment to the location it needs to be deployed, lay it out on the ground and then keep working that fashion. So most of the, the receiver deployment and pickup is all done via heliportable bags. And that's done to minimize the ground traffic and minimize the disturbance to the project area overall. And it's also the quickest, most efficient way to do the project.
Mark, one of the things we, we need to disclose also is whether helicopter will be operating in, in the landing zones and where it will be stored overnight. Is that on private land?
Correct. The plan is that the helicopters will be based out of private property and fuel truck, everything will probably, the fuel truck will be at the landing zone and probably be on cleared, open space on the, on the private property. I haven't confirmed with the private property owners exactly where they want that to occur yet. They've, they've agreed that that's fine. We just haven't determined exactly where we want to base them out of.
And the fuel truck and, and the refueling will, will have secondary burns and spill, spill prevention measures?
Correct.
So Kelly, Elise, anything additional, what did you know?
No, I don't.
Not at this time yet.
I'm, I'm kind of curious. I mean, some of this is, is pretty steep terrain in there.
Correct.
And does that equipment, you know, easily go on that steep terrain and, and hold place there or?
It does. The, I can show you exactly what the geophones look like. I've got a string of geophones right here. So a geophone is basically a magnet inside a coil of, of wire. The magnet moves and generates a, a small voltage across that coil. We record that voltage. It's a, it's a passive system. So the, the layout crew will come along, they'll basically take that, set it on the ground, stand on it, push it into the ground and it just stays there. It hooks into a, a small computer. It looks like that. And so it just sits on the ground for approximately one to two weeks as we traverse the area. And then they walk back and pick it up again.
That's a, it's a good transition to pick up and clean up and everything will be renewed. You know, our philosophy as a company is leave the land better than found it. And I think that's it. We brought in Dan Solinger as a QC and quality control local rancher. He's out there. He knows what it takes to get this done right. And we've done it before all over the world, so maybe a second.
Yeah, well, we like to leave the area better than we found it. It's just like running on the cattle lopmen up there. We always pick it up trash alongside of the road. So when we complete the project with all that sea of ribbons, the paint is biodegradable. But anything that we can pick up, the stakes, pin flags, ribbons, we put them in the bags when they pick up these geophones and they're helicoptered out. So like Mark says, it won't be able to find us next year, especially if we pick up all the ribbons.
Another thing to keep in mind about the receiver arrays is that they're wireless. So it's not going to be thousands of feet of wires around the countryside.
Exactly. In the past, up until ten or fifteen years ago, when you acquired seismic, all of the receiver stations had to be wired together, basically using an electric cord. And they all had to feed back into a central computer that recorded the data in real time. These days, the only wire that exists is this wire that connects the geophones themselves to the small computer. And there, there are no wires that connect one station to the next. So there aren't huge long lengths of, of cable crossing the countryside or crossing roads any longer. Everything is, is very self-contained and it has, it's a lot less equipment and a much smaller footprint. Especially, it, it's not, operationally, it's very important in this sort of area because it's a big hassle to lay out that, those, those wires. But it's less intrusive, whereas if you get into other areas where I'm working in towns and so forth, those wires crossing streets create a huge havoc and, and we no longer have that either. So it's a, it's a slightly different process than it was even a decade ago.
Just to answer one of the commissioners' questions, there are, the reason why the surveyors are out there is not the survey, just the project end, but also the seeps, springs, wetlands, but also the steep slopes and the geo hazards, which would be any scree, unstable slopes. So there will be some slopes that will be ruled out of having any sources on it just because of those, those steep slopes and those geo hazards, which the surveyors will be surveying. And, and we don't even have data on that. Like Farrah was saying, when he was out there mapping, he was finding things that the geologic survey didn't mean have. We'll be turning that information over to the, the Forest Service for their use on where there might be some areas that are of concern that we couldn't operate in. And then we have that as a map. Plus any new seeps and springs, we always find new seeps and springs and wetlands that aren't forbidden that before. We'll be turning that data over as well and adding buffers to those as well.
From a timeline standpoint, when do you expect to submit the majority of your information to Levi?
Most of that sort of information would be submitted to him at the conclusion of the project when the, the data files are completed.
So, but the archaeology will, will go in this week?
And then our, Tony Verflut, our LGE, has indicated that you all met yesterday at Levi's office with Citizens for Healthy Community, the Terra Creek Beach ditch and Western Subconservation Center?
Correct.
And can you summarize the issues that were brought up at that time?
I think that the main thing is, is the Terra Creek watershed and protecting the water source, which is the lifeblood of the community is what we heard.
And how, can you explain how you'll address that for our planning and the commissioners?
Yeah, I'll just answer that. You know, it's, it, our conclusion is from the distance is from the, from the edge of that reservoir and where we are from the first source is over fifteen hundred feet and there is, there is zero chance of any effect. And that's, that's our, so we're not going to have a baseline.
You have to call me if I've learned my lesson.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get through it. It'll always have a long time, so we don't want to, yeah. So anything else?
Yeah, I'll just go through. I mean, just so you guys are aware, we, we've submitted a plan of operations and a detailed information sheet to you guys. And we have a, we have additional copies with maps and also the COGCC Form twenty for the two D line. So there's a lot of good information that's available to the public online through the US Forest Service. But really, we're doing our best to get ahead of the curve and put the proper information out there for that project.
Yeah, that was just, at the same time we're submitting it to you, we also submitted it to Richard who's in, and, and the rest of the folks that are with Richard. We're going to get better at disclosing earlier anything that we do out there and that's our commitment to Richard and his team. We also did the same thing with Gunnison County. They have the same information that you do.
And then you are meeting with Gunnison County's secretary?
That is correct. An informal meeting to go over the paperwork.
Okay, so it's the position of, the last time I spoke in front of you, I was here to talk about protecting the farmer's ditch with the Mark Levin project. And we asked you to make a painful decision. And, you know, I think I, the community, we, we, you made the right decision in that case. And you can leave that map up there. That, that would be helpful, please, your last screen or one of them. When this first, we, we believe that before this project came, we had zero risk to our watershed. Now we believe there is some risk, not zero risk. And I, I want you to understand that the position of the Terra Creek, and you may know this, Robbie was involved early on. We worked with Bowie who undermined part of our watershed and had plans to go really close to the reservoir. And we worked out agreements with them where they identified us fully for many responsibilities of financial losses due to leaks, repairs, all that stuff. And we are willing to work with Gunnison Energy if they will find a way to, to treat us the same. Bowie turned out to be a good neighbor and while they identified us from all that, they were able to make millions of dollars. So that, that's the position of, of our company. The, the map, please, that would be helpful. Because originally, the scope of the actual seismic testing was going to be a lot larger. Now, they did reduce it. They did, I will concede, reduce some risk to the watershed. But they may have done that just because that's all the time they got to do before winter sets in, in about six weeks of it in the high country. But they may come back again and, and ask for the site that is completely in our watershed. And we also view this as, as a piecemealing project. You know, that, this isn't the end game to go in there and, and provide a seismic map to the county. The, the end game is, is drilling and leasing. And, and I think, just like when you, when you get into a house and, and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know that much about it. But there's phases, but you have to look at the overall project. You know, if you've got a housing project for four hundred and you start with fifty, somewhere along the line you're saying, is this area going to handle four hundred? And even though you're going to do it piecemealing so that the impact is less as you go, you have to keep your eye on where are we going with this? And I'm, I'm asking you to, to do your number one responsibility as the commissioner. Protect Ag, protect our water. We used to have no risk. In three years or next year or in six weeks, we will have some risk. And not only do we not have any baseline data, which Bowie provided when they were going to go down West Terra Creek, undermine it. We had measurements at the top and the bottom so we could, we could figure out what is an average travel loss for that five mile stretch of water. And then we agreed that the water commissioner would decide not to bow in or care to, so that there was no malicious intent. So that, we're here asking for those same kinds of protections. Look at the big picture. Your SDRs say you're going to protect Ag. You know, we, there is no monitoring. There's, Levi has, has said he's not going to go out in the field and see how close they go or how big the charge is. I mean, the seismic is a little bit dangerous, but where this is heading is a lot more dangerous. And I don't think that's not in your scope to think about when you get behind closed doors and say, is this spot really the right spot? It's, it's like you take a plate and you fold it into a funnel. Everything, everything that's ever going to happen drains into West Terra Creek, not their seismic project. But anything that expands out of that and that area of operations that I interrupted to say, that purple area of the map, that's what we really have to be thinking about. The green area that they're, they're boom booming now, that's all they got time for before winter. You know, so that's irrelevant to Terra Creek reservoir something. You know, we have to protect our watershed at all costs because it's domestic irrigation and agricultural. And it surely does a lot of good. It is the gateway into the north port. The economic boom that's driving Peony now is all with Terra Creek water. Because as soon as people get into the valley, and this is your area, you know, they go to Azura, they go to Black Bridge, they go to Terra Creek and they go to Stone Cottage. And then they spend the night and then they go everywhere else the next day.
So Richard, I don't want to cut you off, but we are going to have to-
Okay, well, the important thing that I said-
Was the Terra Creek impacted anyway in the previous SG project? And I realize it's-
The previous, two years ago?
The two thousand sixteen. Was there any impact there?
No, not that I know of. But again, without, without measuring it, I don't, I don't remember being notified about it two years ago. So either it was so far away or like what just happened, they got in and out before I knew. I mean, I fixed leaks there, but I didn't know who to blame, so I didn't blame anybody. You know, I mean, that's, that's why you need baseline data. But your answer is no. Thank you.
Anything else from the company?
I just want to point out, we are very willing and will continue to work with Richard and all the folks we did yesterday. The, the Bowie project was an extractive project and the project we are looking at here is not an extractive project. When we're looking at extractive project, we will come back and discuss with Richard the appropriate measures. And we'll also bring the state's baseline requirements for extractive projects to the table.
All right. All right, we're going to bring this meeting to a close because we have here is the next one. We thank everyone for your information and we'll go to you.